All right, we'll go ahead and get started. I'll call to order the village council's regular meeting Tuesday, July 11, 2023 at 7:00 PM. We could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, could you call the roll, please?
Lori Borjo here.
Colson Cook here.
Lorraine Hallman is absent.
Allison Kemp here.
Jacob Nikosia here.
Thank you, and I move to excuse Lorraine Hallman. Motion made by Cook, supported by Kemp. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Any nay? Motion carries. Thank you. Are there any modifications to the agenda for this evening? Okay, there are none, I move to approve the agenda as presented. Motion made by Cook, supported by Borjo. Any discussion? There are none, all those in favor say aye. Any nay? Motion carries, we have an agenda. Five presentations, we have none. Six public hearings, we have none. So we'll go to seven, call to the public. This is the time for the public to, if you'd like to address council, step up to the podium. You may voluntarily state your name and address. Is there anyone who would like to address council on their public comment? There will be another opportunity later in the agenda. Move to the consent agenda, item eight. For receive and file, item a. Correspondence letters, communication, and department reports. Move to receive and file. Motion made by Cook, supported by Kemp. Any discussion? There are none, all those in favor say aye. Any nay? Motion carries. Item b. Move to approve the minutes, bills, and reports. The bill's an amount of $597,339.97. Motion made by Cook, supported by Borjo. Any discussion? There are none, roll call vote, please. Kemp?
Yes. Nikosia?
Yes.
Borjo?
Yes.
Cook?
Yes.
And Hallman is absent.
Motion carries, thank you. Yep.
Thank you.
Good, thank you. Number nine, unfinished whole business. So first is our residential inspection ordinance. And we have McKenna in attendance and a memorandum as well with some additional information.
Yeah, Jim Wright is here. Jim, why don't you step up to the podium there? And I included your poll that we had in our hack last month. It's a little different, some different numbers. I came up with our property just because we have one yard, we have to sample it up. But in theory, it explains what you're doing. There was some questions that council had last month that we thought we could backfill here. And I tried to address some of those. We updated the list, added a new item that came up last month on our list. I think I shared that you can move up the panel. So I guess if council has a question, we can go through it. So I tried to encompass our conversations back and forth with McKenna based on the memo that he provided before. A little rundown of my memo, how that would work with them physically reaching out to the residents, setting up deployments, how we would collect the payments here at our office, and then they would perform the duties outside, come back to their office, create a report, and then share the report with us. That's kind of it in a nutshell, right, Jim?
That's correct.
The one little bit of a wild card is if there's a follow-up appointment needed, then they have to reschedule that. And if we look at that process again, there's a lesser amount for the follow-up appointments for those who either failed for some reason or another, or perhaps it was a no show.
That's correct. If you made a memorandum there that was written, typically, once you come up with a set price for a residential registration and inspection fee, with that usually comes two inspections. The initial inspection, if there's violations, we come back. There's a second inspection. That's included in that initial fee. If we have to come back a third time, then we have assessed a reinspection fee. Typically, usually what we see, that's around a $75 fee. But that would be up to the board to determine what that would be.
Just to clarify, because I put that in the memo too. I think we just want to make sure we're covering the cost of McKenna to perform as well as produce the reports. And then I suggested in my memo, like a $10 administration fee on those to keep the costs down. But we have some work to do in our end and after as well. So I guess the determination of that remorse of what that cost is coming to us.
Correct.
Jim, do you do this for other communities currently?
Seven.
Okay, so this is.
Yes.
Can you talk about maybe how like our rental inspection list may be comparable to other communities? Is this kind of what you typically inspect for or?
Well, I was looking at the list, and it's a, it's a pretty general list. And it's typically, we've pared it down here to mostly life safety issues. A lot of communities get a little bit more stranger than what they like to see. They get into painting on the exterior of the house, the property maintenance code, basically. You know, they really get into the appearance of landscaping, peeling paint, those type of things. What the list you've come up with here, like I said, is really life safety issues, handrails, electrical systems, those type of things is something that is pretty common in all, in all the communities.
Is the 60 amp minimum service, is that, are we going to find homes in the village that don't have that, do you think? Based on the age of some of the homes or?
That is one thing that I recommend that we really don't have is the point of a 60 amp service because that, real older homes have that. But unless they've done a lot of work on the home without benefit of electrician, the old motor circuit, most of them, when they do that work, upgrade their system to a minimum of 100 amp. That's typically what you see everywhere is high amp. 60 amp is like 1990s type era. You don't, you don't see the.
So do you suggest we update it to 100?
I would, yeah, I would update that to 100 amp. Because I don't think, I really, I don't think we're going to see 60 amp panels. I think that's what they use for silk panels.
I believe we, I think we've talked about this before, but I believe it might be a typo from an older copy. We had CO, carbon monoxide detectors in here as well, as well as the smoke detectors. And then I wanted to make sure we included, which perhaps we've included number eight, the deck railing, that the stairs were secure, that this ingress was sound. And then you're saying any deck or landing or porch, or I'm sorry, not you, but on our list, more than 38 inches off the ground must have a co-compliant guardrail. A lot of our old homes don't have that.
That's correct.
And would those be grandfathered in? I guess, I'm sorry, I guess it's more of a question for council, I apologize.
Well, individual personal home obviously wouldn't be covered in the list, right? Like, your own private home.
Who put that shirt here?
I guess, I was just saying it's.
Monthly spinal adjustment.
It says porch, and I think my porch wouldn't be in that.
You're a resident, you're, so, so there's a guarantee of work still, right? You're just wondering whether it's code compliant?
I don't think, it's, I think it's historically accurate.
Okay, that's your attorney asking you.
Okay.
We don't want to talk about your porch.
But I, I don't have, I mean.
I mean, I think it's the handrail is important, I'm not sure about the.
The guardrail?
Yeah, do you see that typically, Jim?
You know, one thing I'd like to say, Jim, I've trained all my inspectors on this. One thing you've got to keep in mind is that a home is compliant, a rental ordinance is set up to maintain a home. Now, a lot of these homes were built prior to the code section, but they were approved at that time. We can't, with the code, with the building code, we can't make somebody do something to a home that was already approved at the time of construction. Now, let's say, let's not use your porch for example. Well, let's say there was another porch we went in and inspected on, and we saw that this porch was built without benefit of permits, and it's more than 30 inches above the ground, and it doesn't have a handrail on it. Then we'd probably say, you guys, you need to put a handrail on this particular porch. But we really can't, except for smoke detectors and carbon monoxide detectors, there's really nothing in the code that allows us to force me to make a person bring their home up to code standards. Life safety issues, the issues you have here are all items that you'd look for typically anyways. You know, a kitchen, you go out for, someone's upgraded their kitchen, you're going to look for GFCIs and things like that. You know, we can, we can make them do that, but.
So you think number eight should be left off?
Yeah, that would be, that would be your suggestion to leave, to leave that off. Like I said, a rental, the purpose of a rental ordinance is to have people to maintain their homes the way it was when it was approved.
To be clear, I don't want to change here.
Now, and it also gets us into the home, so we can see if there has been renovations that were done without benefit of permits that may have safety issues. Then we might have to call out these issues. Where you've got detectors and a landing there, you need to have one there. There could be another case, maybe, maybe an older home had a deck on it, and they did some excavation around the outside of the home, and now that distance is further down there was originally. You know, there's, there's extenuating circumstances there. We might have to call it into, into being. But generally, the purpose of a rental ordinance is to make sure that the building is maintained as the way it was when it was originally approved. Renovations and other things that come up, those are things that we can look at to make sure they're compliant and safe.
So number four should be 100 instead of 60?
Yes.
Then we need to add on the carbon monoxide probably on every level of the home?
Yeah. You'd want to have carbon monoxide detectors on.
I think I wrote that in my handbook, I did make the difference.
We've had that into number six, smoke detectors and carbon monoxide detectors. Are there any other on here that you see we might be missing? In your, your opinion, that wouldn't be big time sucks, but like just really easy visual type inspections that you typically see?
What is your thoughts on trip hazards for sidewalks and porches and things like that? I know it's usually the homeowner's responsibility to take care of sidewalks out in front of their homes and their walkways and things. If you have heat concrete and things like that to create trip hazards, you've got walkways, pedal up their homes, and trip hazards, would that be something you'd want to consider?
That's like the whole village sidewalk system.
I would think the answer to that is probably no.
That would be the one thing that came to my mind is that sometimes we have them repair those either by getting some quickcrete or something and filling in the gas or something like that. But that's not something you want to consider.
So if we made these changes, would, would this type of inspection, this scope fit within the money that you proposed?
Probably not.
I mean, yeah, can all this get done for the price that we're talking about?
Yes, well, we typically, I think we saw in our notes here, I think we said that typically takes about two to two and a half hours, including administration for an inspection. To do an inspection, so yes, that's, that's all.
This stuff would fit within that one?
That's, that's correct.
Okay. Does that time include the report writing?
Yes, that's the issue.
Number one says provide proof, dated receipt signed by the technician of inspection of furnace by a licensed heating contractor showing type of test performed in heat exchanger inspection. So would that be, I guess it seems vague to me. I don't know if council had any particular thoughts, or maybe Joe, would that be projected? Like, is it going to be every time there's mechanical inspection, they're going to be expected to also have an HVAC contractor do whatever tests in a heat exchanger?
That is something that's required everywhere. That's where they have the licensed mechanical contractor come in. They check the heater cores for cracks. They run a CO2 test to make sure there's no cracks and stuff. And we wouldn't have that type of appointment over the time to be able to do that. So we asked for them to, and then when they, usually when the contractor comes in, it's between $80 to $110 to do that. They do a furnace cleaning, and they check the furnace for safety. Then they give us a copy to receive showing that the furnace been checked and it's safe.
Okay, so that's something they would do upon, like basically before, that's part of each of these.
Right, exactly.
And that's on your other community sets?
Exactly, and you'll see that everywhere around inspection. That's one of the priorities that I take, I take. They don't want carbon monoxide leaking inside of the home.
Right.
How long is one of those inspections good for? How recently would it need to be undone?
The furnace thing?
Well, we're, we're going to be doing these inspections every, every three years. And so we want something that's more up to date when we come to see them, something very current. And we wouldn't want to go and see them, and they give us a receipt from the last time they did the inspection, saying, usually we look at something that's within the past month, a month and a half that it was done.
Yeah, in my memo, I didn't, I didn't break it up by the years, but if we're doing, now that you're here, hit the numbers, it would be a three-year rotation, is kind of what I, I don't think.
So if they had an inspection furnace from a year ago, would that be okay?
Typically, we tell them to have it checked if it's a year old.
Okay.
It is expen, I mean, I've done it a couple times, and it's, it's very, it's very expensive. Let's say at least closer to $200. Maybe they just always find something, and then it costs me $1,000, but it's, it's not cheap. So they, so the property owners would pay for that, plus mechanics inspection.
That's correct.
And then they'd be able to pay through the village, is that what we're talking about, Joe?
Yep. Yeah, we would collect all the payments here. They would get it set up, and then we collect the payments here so they know that's paid before they show up.
Can we put a tax, can we put it on as a lien on the property if it's not paid? Like as a taxes?
Well, they wouldn't show up unless it's paid.
We won't do the inspection before it's paid.
Okay, so they pay for it, so they do inspection. If they never pay, the inspection doesn't get done, and then we cite them on violation. Any questions from council?
Just in your travels, do you mind if I ask?
Sure.
Just in your travels, what do you think communities that have these type of inspection ordinances, is it a growing percentage, or is it?
It's becoming more of a, it's becoming more and more prevalent, wanting, wanting to see new stuff because again, especially recently since the COVID situation, where you have a lot of people, a lot of rental homes going on right now. There's been a lot of complaints coming into the different village halls about the conditions of homes that people are living in. It's not being maintained. We get a lot of complaints to the code enforcement. And our remedy for that is that, well, if we got a rental program, we'll be able to get in it more often, be able to make sure they're maintained.
So that makes sense. Okay, thank you.
Can we, as a council, go through the changes we have made? Do we want, would we like to go through the changes we made and make sure everyone's on the same page?
With this list?
Yeah.
That sounds good. Do you want me to kind of look at yours, okay?
If you wouldn't, I just want to make sure, because I feel like we go over this. I just want to make sure that everyone's on the same page.
Joe will take notes.
So, so we have a list of nine items here, which I think we're bringing up a little bit, but they'll be checked by our inspector. And it specifically says it's a checklist provided for your convenience, and does not mean that other items not on the list will not be found. So as you're there, something alerts you that you can address it. So the first one is the dated receipt proof of the heat exchanger furnace inspection. It sounds like that needs to be recent. You're not going to be accepting something of your old or.
Well, and if we go in the basement and we see that someone's purchased the furnace in our building, and our mechanical inspectors ticket's on there, it's been within the past month or two months, we're not going to make, give a receipt for that because if the permit's been inspected by our, our people source.
Okay, great.
Should we, I'm sorry, should we quantify that somewhere like no more, no more than six months old?
That's what I was wondering, yeah, that sounds good.
Looking test fair.
You think six, no more than six months would be fair?
Yes.
Okay, so council, any concerns on number one then? Number two is outlets in the kitchen within six feet of a water source must be GFI protected. Seems pretty common. Correct any concerns on that one? Three is GFI outlets in bathrooms. Four would be modified to a 100 amp minimum service. But any exterior outlets must be GFI protected. Six, smoke detectors must be installed in every level of the home, including the basement, every bedroom, and hall immediately next to the bedrooms. And we would add.
Add CO2?
Yeah, and add a carbon monoxide every level of the home. I believe that's what's.
Yeah, we may, may separate that out.
Two, number one.
Because otherwise it might create a lack of CO2 in every room and every hallway. So maybe we just add that as a separate item.
We'll add that, so.
Just me, I think.
Okay, so the smoke detectors we're good with, and then the carbon monoxide must be every level. Okay, that's an addition. And then handrails must be in place and secure at all stairs. So eight, we were going to strike, but do we want to make sure that there's a handrail coming off of a porch?
Well, you have, you have that right there, number seven. So it's handrails must be in place and secure at all stairs.
Okay, so that would be a front side.
Stairs outside too.
Okay.
And because you have that stipulation in there, if we see something else that's not on this list, that's where we can say, the decks, we see a deck that's fairly new that doesn't have a handrail, we can call that out that time, and that gives us some latitude.
Okay, so exterior and interior, next one, Allison?
Could we add to that, if it pleases the council, that the staircases of sound, secure of sound construction?
Probably, are you concerned about exterior or interior both?
I guess I'm thinking of an exterior example, but I think stairs should probably should fall through.
Right, yeah. Jim, anything about that? Is that something you would normally catch?
That's something we would look at anyways.
Okay, all right.
Are you keeping it off and just having them look at it, or do you want to add it?
Can we add it?
Just like stairs are secure in sound?
Yeah, that'd be fine. That would, the more information you give the public within forms of a list, it's a lot easier because, you know, when you have a list and we go out there and say something, they'll say, well, it's not on the list. The more information you give them, the better.
Okay.
Are we going to include that in number seven then? That'll be a, that'll be separate from.
Like separate? No, but exterior and interior.
Like all stairs in sound condition, there were sound.
Yep. Yep.
The biggest thing when it came up to the fire department was the add-on outside. They were, might have been four by four, and might have some stringers that are very questionable. And they had the lumber that wasn't, outdoor lumber that had painted, now the paint's gone, and they're questioning the safety. I think that's a much larger concern than interior, but I think we'll call it great. I don't know how you quantify the safeness of those.
Well, you know, we had, we had a case here like that not a couple few years ago, where a second story deck was built on a home, and Ricky's stairs go up. Remember, the fire department had to make a call there, and they couldn't get up the stairs safely to get someone out into the entrance. And you can, you know, the guys that are going to be doing the inspections are qualified enough to know that when they go up and see something that's 13 feet up in the air, and it's being held up by a four by four post, and there's nothing bracing it, and the wind's blowing like this, you know this time could be safe. So that's definitely calls something out.
So would that be something that probably never was meeting code to begin with? So therefore, you could then force it?
That's right.
Great. And then the last one is your proper grounding of like panel and water systems.
Yep.
Did we want to add paint to that?
We already have our code enforcer to deal with the definition of maintenance code that we've adopted. And that's, he's sent out a few pain notes over the years, try not to be handed on that. Because that can go anywhere, right? So I don't know if it sounds specifically related to rentals.
That's.
Thanks for hearing.
This is good. So it sounds like we even agreed upon lists for inspections, that's progress. What would be the next step to get to a point where we can vote on an ordinance?
I think the board's last person we had was.
So I, I think I need to spend a little time with Joe on the, what is the definition of rental? Which we have framed as what isn't a rental.
Right.
So I want to read that, I just, I have to toss that off because I, I know we've written it 16 times, but let me take a look, and then we can get an entire ordinance back. And remember, we already have a registration ordinance in place.
Does that define what a rental, or a rent lien it is?
It does.
Or does it do then that this is not?
It, it sort of does both.
Okay.
So I want to make sure that we're, we're consistent in the, you know, what we're inspecting is what we're expecting to be registered. It's got to be, you got to work together, right?
Yeah.
And then the only structural question I have is, do you, do you, does, does the council want this as a separate? Or do you want to amend the registration to now include an inspection component? Just a thought, Joe and I will take a look at it, but it could be an amendment to the registration ordinance.
Because it's the same process though, right? Pressuring, second being?
Same process, same everything. But we'll leave that, we'll get it in shape, and then you can, you can always mold it as an amendment, or you can have it as a standalone.
I would say standalone, but that's just me.
What's the advantages of doing it? None. It's just you, you, in the ordinance scheme, you would, you would find it all located at one place. What do I have to register, and what inspection is required? Would all be in one ordinance, for lack of a better word.
So in, and by paying that you get, so right now, we know when we find a rental that's come to like to us, we send them up, hey, here's a registration ordinance, we need to do this. We have to then say, how soon do you, they don't have to write to get onto that. So we already have, okay, and if we have about 288 total, okay, we do 90 a year. We'll put them on the list, but we might tell them, okay, you're going to have to go do the inspection now, but you're going to be, it might not be this year, next year, or more likely to be the third year, because you'll be on the bottom of the list. So that'll kind of trigger like when that happens to them in, in order. I mean, it's not like they're going to jump to the head of the line because they're going to, they're going to, it's what I think that might take care of. So I'm trying to think when we need to, you know, let them know that that now has to be inspected, or it automatically does, and then that would just fall in line, I guess, with the rental list that we have.
Could we sequence this? Madam Clerk, close to the registration ordinance?
Yes, in fact, when we did the registration, that's exactly what we talked about, is combining two. So we can either put them in shotgun order, or they can just be rental registration and inspection ordinance.
Okay.
Any questions or comments, council? No? Thanks, Jim.
Thank you. The next to you.
Thank you, sir.
So next up is the food and food establishment ordinance, first reading.
First reading to repeal chapter 38 in its entirety. I had questioned Mr. Davis whether we needed to, or would want to eliminate sections 1 through 30, because they were reserved and never used, and that might add. I suggest we repeal the entire section 38.
Okay.
I, I spoiled finding a word in there that's worth saving.
It's not the most soundable.
Pretty good.
Yeah. Okay, I move to, is it approved? How do you phrase this type of motion? I can't remember.
To accept the first reading of an ordinance to repeal ordinance.
So I move to. So I move to accept the first reading to repeal code chapter thirty-eight in its entirety due to being obsolete. Good enough. Motion made by Cook, supported by Kemp. Any discussion? Questions? Concerns from council? Hearing none, I'll do a roll call vote.
Madam Clerk, could we amend that to say, to include, schedule a second reading?
Oh, and a meeting as well? Yep, yep, I'll amend the motion to schedule the second reading and our next regular meeting. Okay, support it again. Okay, so now, any further, any discussion at all? Hearing none, a roll call vote please.
Nikosia?
Support.
Thomas is absent, Bourgeau?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
In close.
Yep. Motion carries. Next up, we have the Quacko project update.
Mr. Quacko, I have been in contact last couple days. What we accomplished is getting the SPO agreement that I drafted that comes with approval for signing in place. The DDA didn't take it up. They were informed about it at last month's meeting, but we didn't have any assurance. I didn't think to ask their preapproval to get it signed that night, so it was taken out at their meeting on Monday because there are statutory on the agreement as well.
Okay.
But all the items in the dollar and all sitting here in there, it's right just below two hundred thousand dollars of the items outstanding at the parking lot that will be, that are listed in the agreement.
We just got to get the DDA to approve something.
Fair.
That includes enough in case frankly what he's done, decrees before.
I don't know what is the sand that's on the ground right now.
The work he's already done.
Yeah, that would be the only thing I think that might be an issue is that there's additional sand that would have to be brought in because the limestone base hasn't been brought in, none of that subsequent. So that's the only thing I guess that would be at risk. And that's not large.
As long as it's absolute.
So essentially what we're doing is if the properties sell, we don't want the proceeds to float away. So there's a table in the agreement that says, you know, here are the stages, we call them phases. And all we have to do is look at what phase are we at then and go below it and total up the amount of money that Quacko agrees is the amount of money, we agree is the amount of money. And that amount of money would have to go in SPO to secure the performance of the balance of the phases.
I'll be sure to email that draft. We just worked out final bit of drafts this week and got signed.
Michael just gave it out.
Yeah, he said it was okay.
Has he spoke about a performance bond option yet or no?
Today he kind of.
Today's performance?
Kind of took it off the table. He doubted, he thought I was just doing the cash route. So he's been more toward that. He always just wanted as a backup option, but today he said I, I'll do the cash a little bit upon sale.
And did you say it was going to be two, two hundred fifty thousand?
No, I think the things that happened, that several items above one ninety-five.
Okay. Yeah.
Not sure that was council. Whenever, if ever, maybe not, it's back to life. It's pretty widespread that outage is up in this area.
Yeah. Any questions, council, or move on? I did say that the asphalt should be going in mid-July. I didn't mention anything about that.
I, I did chat.
You have information?
Yeah, so, sorry, I'm like, so yeah, I did ask him about that today. He said they are waiting on DTE. So, so as soon as DTE gets out there, they can continue. So I did ask him for the contact, wondering if the county contacts could help push DTE to come out sooner. So I did make a couple of phone calls today to see if we could speed it up.
Lady, I shared with him, there's a new plan for area, like Linda Jaserney.
And that's who they're waiting on?
Yeah.
So.
She's right on it, but she's getting along cam ahead of her other.
Okay. So hoping that they can get out of here sooner and later.
Thank you. Okay. Any other, anything else from council, or move on? Ten new business, the northeast parking lot project, contract award recommendation.
So you'll see the letter from Row from June twelfth, which came like the day after our meeting last month, if I remember right. Going through the bits back now, I know we discussed this last month. DDA did take it up at their meeting last month and they come up with a recommendation to council to go with the recommendation per Row that based on the ordinance that we have in place given the local preference. The second place bidder of preference was within the seven percent there in the township of Oxford. They were four and a half percent higher roughly. And it comes about ten thousand dollars even if you look at the bit tab. All things being considered Birmingham Seacoast and then the whole bidder order all capable and would be recommended to do the job, let the ordinance in place best they're going to be able to cut between there. Yeah, there's a, yeah, um. Yep. The entity doing business on the following location in which is otherwise a responsible bid shall be treated as the lowest responsible bid in accordance with the following. So the ordinance pretty much dictates that you go with the lowest bidder, makes it five seven percent local preference. And then with that.
Can, may I ask this question for Bob? If we're looking at this ordinance, is there an option to remove the preference?
We're going to look at, I think on your agenda.
Is it on there?
We're going to talk about the purchasing ordinances in general.
Okay.
So yes, you could revisit that. Just so you know, it's a, it's a long time ago. That was probably.
Fifteen, fourteen years?
Yeah, it was a real strong push to get that provision into our ordinance scheme. I mean, it was, it was, they demanded a draft in that way fast. It was going around, you know, a lot of ordinances to give some preference to, to, to local and closely adjacent businesses. But here, here the council at the time was adamant about that provision. You, you, it is, it is tempered, we can talk about it, it is tempered by the fact that it has, has to otherwise be a responsible bid, so it can't just be any bid. And then I'm going to show you when we get to the agenda item and read for the next meeting. You have a laundry list of what constitutes a responsible bid and what you're allowed to consider when you're looking at whether or not a bid is a responsible bid. And there are all the factors that you would think are in there, you know, the prior history, prior performance, prior work with the community, prior, you know, job completion. So all the, all the regulars are in there. So when we, when we do revisit, if we revisit your purchasing ordinance, we can look at that issue.
Okay.
And you could just, you could just convert it to a May standard.
Yeah, I mean frankly, that's what I would be looking for just because, I mean, with such, so much work to do in the village with tight budget and so I prefer not to pay more just because someone has a business here, especially when it's pretty substantial, like ten percent makes a big difference.
What's the difference between the bid, the bid prices? I mean, why, why is costing you about ten?
It's two hundred and thirty-seven thousand for the low bidder and two forty-seven, almost ten thousand even, just over ten thousand was the difference between the low bidder, which represented a little over four percent. I think I figured it out around four and a half percent.
Is it labor or is it materials or?
Uh, we didn't look at that.
Oh, break, break up, we didn't look at that.
Yeah, because it, it would matter for them and if they're competing with other bidders, but for us it doesn't matter.
So the answer to your question as framed is it's costing you ten grand to a hundred this order. That's probably what you're talking about.
Is there, I don't know, maybe, when they give you a bid, is it a hundred percent always going to be that amount once it comes out?
No.
It's like, we forgot, we left this part off and so it makes you wonder if the other one is they actually put stuff on there that's.
So especially on this one.
Right.
The benefit of going through Row and having an engineer inspect it out, going through that process is there's, there's unit quantities that they put into the bid. So for instance, if they put in three hundred yards of stone and three hundred yards of asphalt and then as it works out, we take weight tickets from those trains, gravel trains and stuff coming in. If they only use two hundred and seventy-five yards, then the unit price, it reduces by the unit price cost. If we say, you know, as long as you're here, let's, let's do another heat peat well for there, finish this low fat. Okay, that might eat up six more yards at that unit price cost, so therefore it might go up.
But everybody's bidding on the same materials.
Yeah, we, we specked it out at a certain amount of asphalt undercutting, which is moving and replacing, and then replacing with asphalt or limestone base. But that's why the inspectors are out there day in, day out. They take measurements, how much they've used, how much they've installed, how much they removed. They take weight tickets from the asphalt delivery trucks and stuff like that to quantify that. So then they turn the contract, turn those pay invoices into Row and they go and they fly second, go through them and put the weight tickets together and match them up. And then they produce a pay application to us based on their review, be sure it matches what was actually laid down or not laid down of the project, whether it's pipe or cement or asphalt. But that's, that's one of the great benefits, especially on a hard work project like this, that you need them out there day in, day out inspecting and doing those quantities and things like that. We read into a few items, quite a few items on the Hudson Denson project that ended up having to be added just because the catch basin down around the corner on the south of the five one building, we went down there and do some work, well, that catch basin just fallen apart. So we have pulled up a new catch basin structure plan. So it's just making sense. You can't work around something that was just completely fallen apart in the ground there, so.
Yeah.
There will be some things that pop up, but in some cases it's less flange going down too. So basically, the recommendation from Row was and then from the DDA was to it now, that this contractor, as I was pointing to earlier, the other low bid contractor has never worked in Oxford. They live right near me, they know they're bidding this project until a couple days before the project. The other Birmingham Seacoast is local. They did our Westbury paving in twenty nineteen from twenty-four over the city, the village, not the village, it's over the West Street. And they've done a few projects for the DDA downtown, things like that.
They're rolling up right now.
Yeah, they're currently doing the work there behind Red Knaps. We're having a couple bumps in the road with them right now that we're trying to work through. But again, I think part of those bumps we're having are because it was, we've done it in a more, a less official capacity of not spec all out to Row, not quantify, it's more of a, we're getting price from them, DDA, and it's kind of the proctor creators who have to wrestle in that sense. So all the more reason that it's sometimes it's just better to do it through the formal process where you have the specs done, engineering done, quantities created done. And as they, we've discussed, and we're looking at the south parking lot project that will be coming up next, as part of the groundwork DDA is doing, that we want to take a different approach with that on.
DDA better.
Yeah.
I'll move to a board. Bid for the Oxford Northeast Parking Lot re-validation to the second lowest bidder, Birmingham Seacoast, due to the local preference for purchasing ordinance. And other qualified.
Sort of up.
And it's, it's the amount of two hundred forty-seven thousand, eight hundred and sixteen dollars and thirty cents.
Support.
Okay, motion made by Cook, seconded by Bourgeau. Any discussion?
I do have one question. So is this coming in under what we thought of wood?
Yes. And I, he may have mentioned, so yes, it's seventeen percent lower than the engineer's estimate. And it was funny, we had six bidders, three were over and three were under the engineer's estimate. I think it was about two eighty or so was the engineer's estimate.
Yep. Thirteen percent below is Birmingham.
Yep, yeah, and so, yeah, so right, so the other one was seventeen percent below, so yes. So it is coming below the engineer's estimate again, but we did have some at three oh nine and three nineteen perhaps was the highest one. So those are range and, and Row was really rating low.
But you're right, and then this is the same number that was put into our, our project.
This is the DDA project for the most part.
Yeah.
And yes, that's what they were dealing with. We were concerned about it going out of bid and we were like, it was in around, between two eighty-nine was the high end of what they could budget. And we were hoping it didn't come over that high and it didn't, so that was good. There's some other costs now to have Row come on site duty engineering, uh, construction engineering, site duty inspections and things like that that they are taking up as well.
Um, roll call vote please, Madam Clerk.
Kemp?
Yes.
Nikosia?
Yes.
Cook?
Yep.
Thomas is absent and Bourgeau?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Next is the first reading of the local food truck ordinance.
No. So on, on one page, the bit tabs are in that packet. You'll see every kind of factors and all these pricing and stuff in there. We did a wee bit on that a little bit. There's a lot of details in there, so you'll see the difference in there, where the difference is the pricing came from.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so we have the local food truck ordinance, which is identical to Oxford Township. Is that the intent?
Yes.
Basically for.
As close as we, as close as we could make it.
Yes.
Um, and I did reach out to them to ensure, I'm trying to get feedback. I think first rate might have sent it, now I can't get it, but I know. One of their concerns was that it's the, the fee is set by council in your fee cycle, so it's not part of the ordinance. So I believe there's this fifty dollars and you would make ours the same courtesy.
We did the rest of the price.
Yeah, so, yeah, it's going to be one permit, township and or village wide and at the same price. So it is, they can, they pretty much pay, it goes to the fire department, we can session.
I will move the first reading of the, I will accept the first reading of the Village of Oxford ordinance, four two zero, where the local food establishment ordinance is presented. And so a second reading at the next regular meeting. Thank you.
Support.
Okay, motion made by Cook, supported by Bourgeau. Any discussion? Hearing none, do a roll call vote please. Kemp?
Yes.
Bourgeau?
Yes.
Nikosia?
Yes.
Cook?
Yes.
And Thomas is absent.
Who cares, thank you. Um, next up is a ten C, the investment policy, proposed resolution twenty-three D eleven. Madam Clerk, did you want to talk about that?
Yes, I can. I included a memorandum in, in the packet that outlines what we've been doing. I, I did bring this up in the past regarding, you know, updating the investment policy because we really, I didn't ever bring it forward because there was not a whole lot of options or activity until like December of this year. At that time, we came to the council and asked for permission between the manager and I, I take advantage of some of the interest rates that were very favorable in the form of CDs and, you know, with, there were a number of banks and, you know, securities to be considered. And so, you know, we wanted to have, have the option instead of having you pick and choose this bank, this bank, this bank, this bank. Since then, we've, and I included a summary at the table for you, we've really been doing very well with our, our investments. Right now, they're around five percent. Michigan Class just posted, and I included that in the packet, I do believe. In the month of June, it shows the yield was between five point one nine and two point one, two point two one percent, which is really, really good. And we wanted to have the option to open another depository with Michigan Class, which I do believe the village was, participated in a long time ago. The problem was the old investment policy did not include, you know, under Public Act twenty, section one items like the I and J, which would give us the ability to select these pooled investment accounts, Michigan Class being one of them. So I included that in the investment policy, which is also attached, attached in your packet with a resolution that covers pretty much everything we need. I gave the policy to our attorney and also had it reviewed by our auditor. I have not heard any issues.
Oh, good on my review.
Yeah.
I think your auditor was good too.
Yeah, so at this point, I'd like you to entertain the resolution before you and hopefully pass that so we can move on and give us another option for these investments. Again, I'll work with the village manager, keep him informed of these, you know, movement of, of money and you as well. But instead of waiting, you know, I'm just thinking, uh, till the next meeting, maybe four weeks can pass and those, those rates can go up and down pretty quickly when they move, they move. So this gives us the ability to act, you know, right away. And that's why that's before you. The investment policy technically should be updated or at least reviewed once a year, so I'll be bringing that before you. But again, in light of the last nearly five years since I've been here, the activity has just been, there's been no activity as far as investing and there was never a need to really bring it forward, but I probably should. and there was never a need to really bring it forward, but I, I probably should have anyway, so I will do that in the future.
This conversation is finally relevant.
Mm-hmm, yes.
Several years ago, we were just trying to decide which bank, which bank were we gonna get a half of, a half of a percent?
Right, yeah.
So this is now irrelevant, and really you should have this renewed and approved annually.
Okay, great, thank you. Move to the doc resolution twenty-three eleven, as presented. Support, motion made by Cook, supported by Forshaw, any discussion, questions? Hearing none, roll call vote please.
Forshaw?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
Nikosia?
Yes.
Cook?
Yes.
Thomas Isafson.
Thank you, thank you Terry too for always being on top of all of this, and doing a phenomenal job for the village. Uh, next is the crosswalk project design and inspection costs.
Okay, so, and I apologize, you see, the one memo I got from Row today, and I, I put this on as, we didn't, I mean, no documentation in that. So I, I was trying to get some more clarity and some information. So if you recall, we're looking at the crosswalks at two locations. One was on South Pontiac, down there after elementary. And then the other one was on Westbury, just west of Pleasant, there were trucks there, just west of the intersection. Initially, I used some numbers for budgeting purposes, using the unit quantities of the street projects that we did, using the home equity charges per removal place occurred, home equity charges for the ramps and the AD ramps, so I guess, so I kind of had it in a nutshell, bare bones, kind of price. So that's what we budgeted. Well then, I was getting a little cold feet of trying to do this without bringing our engineers in because in most cases, literally we have equipment in the lanes, removing curb, it's gonna be left overnight with barrels and stuff. There is a need to have the proper slope and the tang of the curves in, and so I just didn't feel comfortable. Even though there's specs out there that end up by its, and drawings for this type of a ramp, a quarter type of ramp, things like that, I just wasn't comfortable. So I reached out to Row, I said, look, I'm gonna need some, really to incorporate them, and bring them into the plan. And so, I had those numbers, and I got some numbers from Paul Mira from Row, and I about fell out of my chair, so. And, but now there's a large reason for it, come to find out. So if you look at the spreadsheet that I have, it's like.
Is this something you used on? Isn't, you said it's on the packet?
Right, it's on, I just dropped it off on the table here for this evening. I might have put it on the chair next week, but that was the memo, it was on there for some reason.
Oh, sorry, okay.
But again, it only came through today. So if you look at the spreadsheet, everything on the west side, it's a line down the middle, it's, well, you had a, my basic figures, and what I kind of figured in the price of, I only had nine thousand dollars between the one on Westbury and one one thirty Pontiac. Using just some numbers out of the Hudson-Denison project. Well, then I get to Row, and that, it's ten times more, it's seventeen thousand on the Westbury, Row's estimates on the price. And this is their engineer's estimate of the contract. And I started seeing a lot of difference in the, in the quantities, and I wasn't sure where it was coming from. And so I reached out to them again last week and today, that's why I printed off the, the last sheet, you see, I just came through today. So on the last sheet, you see a Google map to the intersection of Pleasant and Westbury, right?
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, so initially, all we were doing was proposing, all I was looking at was proposing where the yellow line is, there's a north and south line coming from the sidewalk on the north side of the road, from the sidewalk on the south side of the road. Well, if you see the dotted line all around, there's a faint dotted line around the old intersection, Row went out, when they looked at it, they said, the ramps on the south of Pleasant meets, are really bad shape, and then that in plan. He said, you're paying all this money to have mobilization, you're paying this money to have contractors out there ripping up curb. You could have them do those other two ramps and incorporate, you know, this in there as well. He said, but if you wanna save money, you, you don't have to, but their recommendation to me, you're right there doing this work, and you pay so much for mobilization, you pay so much for traffic control. They would suggest to you, because initially, we, Don and I and Paul walked this, we tried to get just west of the, the curve of the, the curve coming Pleasant to Bridget, to stay out of that curve, to avoid having to do, try to keep costs down. We're just west of that, where it straightens out there on the north curve, purposely, to stay away from that, minimize cost. And so we could still do that, and these numbers won't be near as near as much as it is in the engineer's estimate. So that's the option, I, I, so when I saw his numbers about, so how, how accurate do you go off? But he's actually looking at curb and ramps on both of those on Pleasant Street side as well.
So how do we break out the possible, like, we wanting to do?
You could, you look at the unit quantities and then just break out, I'd have to look at the, the details of, he's got measured curb, so many feet moving replaced. One other thing too, that I didn't have in that, so as you lowered the sidewalk down a little bit on both sides of the street, and this, the one in Pontiac wasn't as far off, I mean, it was, but there's some things I just didn't have figured into mind on purpose. As you lower the sidewalk in those areas, to get down to a reasonable level, so you can meet the A slope down the curb, you're dropping down in the, you can't just leave it going straight up in the, in the neighbor's yard, you know, a foot up. So we would have to, where the neighbors get permission to parade that back six, eight feet to get the proper slope. And we can just get permission from the neighbors to allow us to take that dirt out, so it slopes down and meets the sidewalk versus the, otherwise, you'd have to put like a curb on the back of the thing, which just adds more cost too. So those are a couple things that I didn't have figured in, because I thought we could just come straight down out of there, we're looking at, and with the naked eye out there, it looks like we could do it, but when engineers look at it, you can't, by the time you lower that sidewalk down, get to the proper level, get the slope out to the road surface, get the A slope that's required, you have to lower the sidewalk. And by lowering the sidewalk, now you have a dirt wall in the back of it, that has to be addressed one way or the other. Either curb, or just smoothing it out into the neighbor's yard.
So you're saying the sidewalk that's like perpendicular to the crosswalk is going to be.
Yeah, the existing, the existing sidewalk comes over to there, and now we're gonna tie a hill with T into it with the new ramp. Because of the height of it, it's too steep to go down the curve, so you gotta lower that sidewalk, you remove it, you gotta lower it down a little bit, so it's proper slope going down to the road.
And then grade and.
So behind that, now.
Hold for the front lawn.
Yeah, so, yeah, for about ten feet across there, you're gonna have something like this of dirt. And you can't have that, because they can't load it, and it's not, you know, someone could twist an ankle or whatever, so you need to kinda grade that back or like five or six feet back. You know, you're gonna get permission, because that's their property outside of the right way.
That neighbor on Verdick is like five, you know, six feet your, at their front porch.
I don't think it's as bad on that side as it is on the north side.
Okay.
Just curious, did we look at like maybe potentially putting it at Pontiac and Verdick, or is that problematic?
We didn't, for a couple reasons, I know on the council's observation, anecdotally at least, is a lot of people coming up the hill, crossing at the top of the hill. And I think there might have been some, there's a lot of activity, I think more activity at Pontiac. I think you and Paul agreed, the, the, I'm, Don and I probably were thinking wrong, but those are the reasons, he, he agreed that, he thought that was a better location as well. Initially, my concern was, well, you got the hill there coming, but there's, there's ample space between where that location is and the hill coming over, the traffic. Even if they're going a little faster than the speed, and like there's adequate space, we're too close to the hill, the crest of the hill.
To the Pollyand, we see a lot of people coming down Pleasant from the Pollyand going across, like, those.
Yeah, there's a lot of traffic, it is up north and, and, or south too, on, on Pleasant.
Would that require kind of the same work though, if we moved it down further?
Um, I don't know, there would be, it would be just north of, you know, the funeral home driveway and stuff. So I'm not sure if that's, would be as much. So, again, initially, I know, even I remember council even saying, well, maybe we do this without Row, and that was my old approach, I thought maybe we could, so I kind of paraffled it. So part of Row's, what I'm bringing tonight is not necessarily the cost to do the work, the cost of having it designed. So the cost of designing it is sixteen thousand dollars, that's the survey, construction plans and everything, and bidding and the formal bidding and stuff. That's both, north and south. Now, if you cut out the extra work, something will, will, will work on their end.
That's just designing.
Designing, and, and bid specs, and the contract, and the type of graphics, the survey folks have to come out, it's all separate team, they've got a survey group, to get the elevations right.
So that's to do all the extra work?
Yes.
That we didn't necessarily contribute.
Yeah, and I don't know, I mean, by the time you get a survey crew out, drive down here and set up and do the surveying, I don't know how much less it's gonna be, if they only do the north and south side of this location versus the east and the west.
I'm not gonna cut it.
No. So, I mean, for me, I just, if, if you look at the engineering costs and the engineer's estimate, you add them together, that's pushing fifty grand. Now, that is not just two sidewalks, or two crosswalks, it's three, but it's a lot more, but.
Just make sure the valid is, so, on page two, the compensation fee breakdown, sixteen thousand three hundred, that's the, just engineering and design.
Yes.
And then if you go to the spreadsheet, then it would cost another seventeen thousand two hundred and five dollars for Verdick Pleasant.
Yeah, they, you know, he's being a little, he's being a little high in some of his costs. I use the cost out of the Verdick Hudson project, that's a larger project, so sometimes you're gonna get less quantities, right? It, they might remove and replace the curb for eight bucks, a linear foot, or if someone's coming down to do a smaller project, it might charge you twelve dollars a linear foot.
Gotcha.
So he's being very conservative and pushing those numbers higher, I think.
And then another thirty-seven thousand six hundred for the one town.
No, that's a total.
That's a grand.
So right above that, seventy-nine thirty-nine.
Oh, I see, seven thousand nine.
I was trying to get them all, I was pushing them together to get them all on one sheet, so. See, well, one thing for sure, then, so sign purchase and installation, our DPDW would be there, purchase and install them, so I have four, five hundred, and he had forty-five hundred. He has, as a contractor, is gonna do all that work. So there's four thousand dollars right there that wouldn't be, you know, needed.
Yeah, he's, he's probably got sixty or seventy hours just in engineering costs in here, like, the way that he's bidding it, so I mean, I think that's.
A little fat.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, 'cause I mean, that's with project management and stuff.
Yeah, again, and this, this includes then, not on site inspection and data acceptance, that's not that.
Well, this includes verifying the invoices, making, making sure the payments are correct.
Um, includes doing all the bid, bid work, getting all the bids selected in, in a board letter. But I don't think any of the pay apps, no, no construction engineering, which is, the inspections going out. I would at the minimum have them come on out with, you know, projects getting poured, to verify that it was poured correctly. Don and I, you can see that they're, they're matching the curb, we can go out and verify that they're pinning the curb, things like that. But as far as it comes, the engineers verifying the slope angle is correct, and things like that, add for they come out this month, and so it's time to verify it.
Do you think we should ask them to restructure this, just for the work, so we can see what it would look like if we just did the work that we're thinking about?
I, I'm leaning towards, you know, wholly, because I think, it is very, the, the intersection there is really bad, no few read on it, the.
They're just not gonna cut.
The Pleasant Street slopes are really bad.
The curb.
The curb is bad.
Yeah.
The curb on the west side is for sure included, I'm not sure about the curb on the east side, but the ramp for sure is very, very bad.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's one of those things where you draw the line, right? You, 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 when, on the Hudson-Denison project, I know it caught some flag from some of the locals, like, why don't you put all the curb in front of my place? I'm like, if you have a hundred for a good curb, I'm out, can't afford to tear it out. But if they had two broken pieces, we would tear it out, two sections, we might, and sometimes it gets a point of removal, replacing smaller sections isn't real costing factor, but it's still a draw to life sometimes.
Yeah, I mean, I know the curb across Pleasant Street there is very poor. I mean, frankly, most people stand, somewhere around the grass or in the road on Pleasant and run across Verdick because that's how you get to the Pollyand Trail, that's how people get to Frosty Boy, that's how people get to the market in town. And it is, it does feel safer to cross there than to cross down by Pontiac, because you have.
And they, I, it's very easy to get hit there.
Yeah.
And it's just a lot of walking to get down to the line, to get across, or going way past Frosty Boy, you know, it's like.
Right.
Runnin' for that ice cream, not wanna go too far.
And again, people are, a lot of people are coming to look at it, head north.
Yeah.
To go probably to the trail or, or some coffee place to.
Yeah, like, I, I would be interested in, yeah, like, I'm saying, what, what is the cost just for getting us across the road and not doing the other work? I mean, I understand that it already out there, so it's not.
I, I could have a look at that and bring it back. The problem is, we're gonna run into a little bit of weather issue, we really can't, which is not, probably till, say, September, August, or.
Right.
Not that that's seen in the world, we can get this daily just the way we want, and get it designed this fall, turn around, build it in the spring. Our goal was to have it done, you know, this year, before this, I was hoping, right, we can get back together, but.
So we're hiring, so we would be hiring them to begin, begin their work. Essentially, right, so we'd be committing to paying them the.
Yeah.
Sixteen. Sixteen, no, the rest would be further refined.
Yeah, yeah, the, the engineer's estimate will change drastically, to have been on the north of Pleasant Street location because of the quantities being much different. I don't know how much your survey and construction plans and specs part would change. It would be some. And the survey might not be cut that much because it proves coming out, but to take, like, the engineering might, might be half. And then that's not a.
Well, we should probably, yes.
Yeah, I can't admit to everybody, because I told them, that's why I was shocked with these numbers, you're like, where did he come up with all this stuff at? Well, if I look at that, it really could be done, you can not do that, save money, that's perfectly what you're thinking, so. I just wanna explain the fall detail where we're at on it, and we can come back with a revised engineer's estimate, of course, and there will be some change on the, you know, design and engineering as well. I can write back next month if that's, cause wish, because otherwise, it's about fifty thousand dollars. Yes, so, you know, we could probably get done what we want, get done drafts for, you know, twenty-five thousand.
I mean, because it's all, I mean, yeah, it's all engineering design, it's not designing sidewalks, designing the traffic flow, and then creating these months.
That's for the.
Formed models, they're not doing, they're not out on site doing it, it's all the prep work beforehand to give to somebody else to be able to do it for the bidding process, right?
They'll be on site for the survey.
Does seem like a lot. I mean, I really wanna see the crosswalks, just 'cause I feel like there's a huge safety issue, people cutting across Verdick especially.
You know, Pontiac, or, I'm sorry, Pleasant Street is on our radar eventually, if we done one of these, it's not, it doesn't have water main picture, right?
No water main.
So there's no water main there, so, but it's been one of our, toward the top of our list is the road that needs repair. Obviously, we're being driven by the water main projects, so it's hard to fill up money and do like we did in West End Park.
Yeah.
But we'd hire, so, but when we did Pleasant, we would, you could wrap it all around and incorporate those all into that project at that time, but that could be several years.
I don't think I've ever agreed with something most of the past as much as right now, which is like, we don't need no crosswalks, it's, it's a lot of money, I wasn't expecting that. I don't know, that road's pretty bad, as you said, Pleasant's pretty bad, and I just kinda think. I don't know, I was attempting just to table it until that's done, and doing.
I could, at the minimum, bring back a revised, smaller, because that was more in line with what the original plan was. It's hard, it's like, what it might be, just looking at this, and then you guys, you know what?
Yeah.
Yes, no, maybe so, let's pump for a year, I, I don't know.
Right, do you know what the mobil, he's got mobilization fees on there in the local two, do you know what that is?
Well, when the contractors drive from whatever, ten miles, thirty miles away, they drive down, drop off their equipment, they have their, traffic, people drive down, drop off all their cones, and they spend a half day doing that. And then the next day, they start working. So that half day was all the trucks coming and going, dropping stuff off, crews bringing stuff up, coming off, that's basically what it is. You got guys and drivers with trucks and equipment dropping off stations somewhere, maybe up the road or in our back lot, probably, like they did before. There's a half day there typically, that there, getting work actually done out there, and bringing stuff to site.
I think we all have some sticker shock. I would like to see the revised estimate, but could you gently remind Row that it'd be nice to have it before the day of?
Yep.
Thank you, so we can think on it or.
Well, not that they've got this done too, I mean, we, we've been involved a lot in the last six months, a lot of things to do, the different projects and different things going on.
And if they're not gonna, I mean, if we, sixteen thousand three hundred, to just get like, tell, tell us, tell the contractor how to do the work?
It'll be designed, plans will have.
Right, alright.
Good print that will have on file, has the adnals and stuff too.
Adnals, I mean, do you think that this is competitive, could we seek elsewhere? I mean, 'cause even if we can save like five thousand dollars, would it be worth just hiring someone else to do it?
I would imagine it won't change much, but then, so, you know, sixteen thousand dollars, twenty percent, it's pretty normal, right? Yeah, I don't know.
I just know we always use Row, but maybe, maybe now is the time to, since we're seeing the sticker shot. Not that they are responsible for the.
They gave us, they gave us a price for work beyond what we, yeah.
Yeah.
Right.
It's bothering me a little bit.
Yeah.
Not that I, not that I don't appreciate it, because what they were trying to say is, you might as well just do all of this.
But then give.
Alternates, right. But then we sort of still see. But then we sort of still seeing both, but, but here's what you asked for.
Yeah.
So I still wanna see, what, what, what is the response to what we asked for?
Right.
I think you guys deserve to see that before you have all our sticker shock.
Um, so I guess is, so would part of the road be addressed as part of that project as well, too? So I guess I'm assuming that.
What patch on the, uh?
Part of the, never mind, I guess we can figure that out later. I mean, some of the extra funds that we put in, in for the roads, could they be used, uh, supplement?
Um, well, yes, this is a major street, we're a major street, so that's pretty much where this will be charged to.
Okay.
Finance is major street as well. I, I'll, I'll, I don't need any actual, or any work, I'll just, I know what I can do, I'll hang on back, something better if you look at, um.
Sounds good. Thank you. Okay, uh, the purchasing ordinance through you, update Mr. Davis?
So, um, you, you've been, been a positive player doing a lot of projects. And Joe and I have spent some time having to visit purchasing ordinance, to make sure that we're applying what your current program says you should do on projects and certain levels of money. So we, we took a pause on a couple of these last projects and we have projects coming up and we started looking. And I think what, what, what you guys need to do is you need to, which I have for you, so you don't have to watch. You need to take a look at your charter and what your charter says on purchasing. And your charter, I can tell you, basically says, get your subordinated ordinance and follow your ordinance. So I have the charter provision for you attached to a memo, and I summarized the charter for you, so you don't necessarily have to read it, but you can. And then I attached to the same memo, um, the purchasing ordinance as it currently exists. And I think that some of the levels of money that you, you put, well, at this level, you, we need to do this, at this level, we need to do this. Those numbers were driven by statutes that were in effect and that have been since repealed. Statutes that, um, basically told local governance, if you don't do it this way, then you're not gonna get Act Fifty One money, or you're gonna be penalized somehow. And those, those statutes have been repealed. So I'm gonna hand you out, um, just kind of came on quick, I was able to just do a little summary memo for you. And attach the charter for you, the relevant provision, and attach the ordinance for you. And I think that at the next meeting, Joe and I will come back with some discussions on the things that we think maybe your ordinance should change. And, um, and why. And we'd be more than happy to hear what you think. And, and, and the goal is to, is to make our purchasing processes not only effective, but designed to get us the best pricing and comply with the law. So we're not trying to create an ordinance that, you know, shortcuts the process in any way. We're trying to get an ordinance in play that ensures that the village does the best in the market in a lawful way. So I'm just gonna pass these down. And that way you don't have to go anywhere but one source to look for, um, Ms. America, would you like one?
Um, I have a question about the, the thing we addressed today with, um, local business, local preference, is that?
It's in your ordinance.
Is the way it's written, is it that we have to take the local preference or that we can?
It's a shell, it's a shell.
Thank you.
It was, um. Like I said, it was, it was, uh, it was pressed pretty hard that it'd be a shell standard. Or he'll probably remember. I know Don remembers that. I was lukewarm on the whole concept, by the way, so, yeah.
I mean, I, I can understand to a certain degree, if you're like, okay, well, I know this name, we've done, we've heard, you know, you've been working with him that company, this community next to us has been working with. But then, and then somebody comes in and you're like, I've never even heard of him, never knew about him, and now they're a little bit, and the other one's just above, and I know them, so I get that feeling.
Yeah, if, if I go back in time, I, I can tell you what my argument was, is that I believe at the time that we should, if we're gonna do this, let's make it an edge breaker. And, and I believe that what we ended up with was too large of a percentage.
Yes, great on a small job, but.
So, so an edge breaker would have been, look, if, if, if we're, if we're within, you know, X thousand bucks on a fifty thousand dollar project, like, you know, you're, you're reputable. I've worked with you before and you reside in the Village of Oxford. You're reputable and we know you do good work, but you reside in Ohio. Just the edge goes to the, the local. But we, we, we ended up creating such a large percentage. It's a game changer for you financially, like what you experienced this evening was a ten thousand dollar swing. By, by, by following your ordinance cost you ten grand.
Right.
And I think that that's wrong.
And the village's contribution to that project was twelve grand.
Right.
So essentially, the village just paid for Birmingham Sealed B over.
Took, took.
Right.
And we've got some big jobs coming out.
And, and therefore why we're doing this.
That can be.
Now, because it's, uh, you know, you're, you're at a stage in your, your growth and your productivity where you're doing projects and, and we should get this right.
One other point, too, is the sealed bid versus RFP process, I know Kelsey liked me a little bit last month when we talked about this, the difference between, uh, how the one is tied to state statute of relief or something like that. We would like to have a date where, you know, I, I, I'm looking for some guidance, okay, how can I work these RFPs, it's much better to work, because it's out of that area, because. And then the way the ordinance is written is twenty five thousand dollars or greater requires a sealed bid, formal sealed bid process. And, and if it's less than that, if it happens to be a public works process, that's a, of course, a sealed bid. And then they all require a, uh, contract for some degree review, but some, in some instances, uh, PO is okay. Because, you know, sometimes down like Long Beach, six, eight thousand dollars with a, three or four tree trimmers. He's got five, six, large trees or eight large trees that are going down at seventy, eight grand, that's over five thousand, so we get our prices. It's not over the twenty five, so we don't need sealed bid, and it's not a public works.
If you got a written contract, review by.
Well, the PO, the PO could work that, because it's not a public works project, I think public works definition of this kind of grade, does that mean sewer water and roads? Or does it mean trees for DBW, is that a public works, you know, so.
We need to look at these things, and, and again, the goal is, is to make sure we get effective pricing in a lawful way. We're not trying to concur to ordinance to get around anything, but.
The larger projects, like that one.
Just doesn't work anymore.
Pouring tonight, um, those are going, always gonna be done, and they're best to be done by using our consultant and engineer to design those specs and bid them out. If we bid them differently, perhaps, you know, that's fine, but then all the details, all the quantities, all the, some of them didn't have to pay for those types of projects.
And I think you should formalize in a new version, the instances where you can wait competitive bidding for unique products. For example, your water operations, you know, there are just some valves that only one person makes, right? And we shouldn't have to go out for bid on some of these things, um, when there's a sole supplier. Or when, when the process of a bid is not likely to result in more competitive. And we should adopt formally the, the bid processes that the state has already put in place where they bid for us, you know, if you buy a bid or.
Buy the old stuff.
Buy the old, some of that stuff. So we'll, you guys take a look at it in here in a bit of time, we'll take a look at it and see if we come up with something better for this community.
Because we have a couple of them that will be likely done yet this fall.
We wanna get this.
In the water part of the nation area.
Yeah.
But the East Vertic, the part we got a little bit of money from the, uh, Golden, kind of Board of Commissioners, can be done next spring. We had like twelve thousand five hundred down the East Vertic over there, we were hoping to maybe expand it a little bit to take advantage of it, because it's a fifty percent match. So it could, it's high at twenty five grand perhaps, but we'll need a little bit of, you know.
Don, you need one of these?
Oh, I'll, I'll share with Mark.
I didn't want you to feel sleepy.
So anyway, so there, there's, there's some work on, on the, this fall, will be done on the, uh, the tanks, feeling, feeling on top of the water plant. That would be, well, maybe half the twenty five thousand dollar sealed bid threshold. But then there's a, a well, a pump, a rehabilitation that we're looking to do, that'll probably be in that range.
And there could be.
There's only a couple bidders that we're gonna work with that we have in the past, but again, if it's gonna go over, according to our ordinance, we're gonna do the sealed bid process and things like that. But some, sometimes these folks, they just wanna fire off emails here in that price.
Yeah.
All right, are we good?
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, our note, our movement consent agenda, so we're moving to public comment, second number to you, would anyone like to address council under public comment? Before you go to the podium? Okay, so now we'll move to the committee reports, um, Noda?
Oh, we don't do July meetings through Noda.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
For July break, good.
Yep.
Um, planning commission or cable commission, I don't know if anyone has any updates on the planning commission?
We, for the, uh, resort request for Hudson and Denison.
Okay.
I don't think there was a prior meeting, was there?
Nope, not the last one.
These people care.
But we've had a few calls about that, one call was to someone wondering to be sure it wasn't moving around my place, and I'm sure that it wasn't. It means our future land use map and stuff, so it should be fine.
And then the, I know the, the new development involving the coffee shop and the car wash, is that still to be determined?
Nope, they're, they're, they've got the permits, they're clearing land, the coffee shop is still, we haven't even seen the application from.
Okay.
With the other ones.
With the car washes.
Yeah, that's, they have to deal with MDA, there, there was some questions from them about the bowling on his rowing cap and the water main is right around the curb on the, on the east side right down. Um, so there're gonna be lane closures, they're gonna be cutting a new road.
Oh, wow, okay.
I mean, we tried and I tried to get the owner of that property back, and the project is going to extend that water main across, and it's a question of who's gonna pay for that? Well, not us, they'd be able to go to their property. So it didn't happen, and unfortunately, they will be cutting in a new road in order to get a four pit or a connection area over there. That's the team that I'm in, for the most part, obviously, we're involved, and Don, they're maybe to inspect their connection, but we will form a network.
Thank you. DDA, Kelly, would you mind giving a update?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, so lots of great things happening, um, I don't know if any of you, well, I know some of you were at our kids' night on Thursday with Ava Swiss, but it was our most attended concert we've ever had. Um, people all the way out to M twenty four, which was really cool to see, we didn't finish up, um, I was tying balloons until about nine fifteen that night. But it was just really, really great, and we have our concert center market that has just been so successful this year, uh, great feedback. We're doing a ton of grant work, um, hoping to get some of these MEDC grants that are available, so we've been turning in those applications and working, um, with Main Street, Oakland County on the remainder. Um, we are finishing a downtown map, so it's going to be a trifold map that will be available on the trolley and in all of the stores and restaurants. That just give a listing and a map out of all of our locations downtown, so that's something that we've been working on for quite some time, but it'll also be available on our website as well. We are going to start a trolley pilot program to utilize the trolley on different days and running into some different, um, cities or villages. So we chatted with Rochester and Holly and Clarkston, and they're interested in the program to try to bring more people into downtown and just some, some new people. We are launching on Thursday the e-commerce site that I think I chatted about two meetings ago, but it's finally coming to fruition. So we have eight of our businesses in the downtown already signed up on the platform uploading products. So it's, um, Shop OC, so Shop Oakland County, and the way I like to describe it is kind of like X-words, very own Etsy. So it's a one-stop shop, you can go to multiple stores, um, purchase from those individual, individual stores, but it's one checkout process, which is really nice. So, um, for a lot of the businesses that don't have the capacity to have their own website or keep up on it, it's free to them, it's easy to manage. Um, the, um, the platform, the people who manage this platform have just the most incredible service department, and our businesses have just been getting a lot of love from them, so it's been really neat. So look for that on Thursday. And then the last thing is, I just wanted to kind of tease this up to you to see what you thought of it, but I talked with Joe and talked with the chief, but, um. We would really like to bring the homecoming parade to downtown this year and partner with the schools that way, um, but make it a very short route on M twenty four, so that it's not too much work for the chief and his staff. But, um, in the past, it's just kind of been right up the hill, and for families, it's a little bit tougher to be able to watch and sit, and the sidewalk space is limited. So, um, hopefully bringing in that application to you guys next month for that. And that's about it, I don't know if you have anything from this past meeting?
No, everything's kind of really smooth, and yeah, the turnout for all events, the market is fantastic and turnout's great. Community just looks wonderful, so, yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Alex, have anything on the Palladium Trail, or should I look at Joe first?
They did not. They don't meet in July.
No, in July.
But in July, I was on vacation that day. I did, I do have a minute, so now, we're looking at a few things, and there was some talk about crosswalks and things like that, or like, uh, out there on the east of town, too. Loads of interest in that, just a lot of things to put together to beat on there. But yes, and then they don't have a meeting in July.
Okay, thank you. Um, so next is our managers, staff and attorney reports, Mr. Mordor.
Um, so, and, so I don't forget, uh, well, for starters, the last two weeks of June and the first two weeks of July were two days a week, so. A lot catching up this week, and of course, yesterday, our email went out for about eight of the nine hours that were open, and today went out again around two. So there's a fire somewhere that we're on the common climate system, it gives a third, sorry, internet, so it's been kind of rough, but. I did have just enough time today to put some on our Facebook page, I see Jay too, shared as well. Weather permitting, tomorrow, we're gonna have a, uh, West Vertic close from Pleasant to West Street at ten AM for about an hour. There's a large tree on the north side around fifty seven, fifty nine, um, that was down in the stone ground, then we'll get a chance to get it the first day, so we're gonna bring it back, try to get that lower down. DBW did already back, trucked out all the stuff that looked exposed, well, it's just a large operation, the back truck will be there and stuff, try and get it, get it leveled out, because it's just a big mound of root-bearing dirt there. Something that's more manageable for the resident. Again, if it's heavy rain or, I, I don't know to what degree you'll be able to call it out, I'm sure it'll let down in the morning, what it looks like. But I have contact with the fire department today, let them know that that's on radar for tomorrow as well, to put it out on our site. We did finally get at least a second bid for the roofs, uh, repairing or replacing for the back building. The first one was the Star's roofing out of like boring, it was twenty five hundred dollars, did a little patching, there's some ceiling coat down there. The other one was a large well roofing coming to come out, and they just came back with, with a decent price for a total re-roof, but it was seventy three thousand dollars. So obviously, we don't wanna do that, um, we're, we're putting money into our parking lot in the next couple of years, so I've restarted the start, say, let's, let's go with their plan. Then we know if we could for another five years, and then we have to deal with the roof on a longer-term basis, but right now, let's, let's do the band-aid. I think we'll be fine, there, there's only a couple of leaks out there in the roof to begin with. So I'm trying to get that yet done, and once the roofing gets done, the, the pricing we got for the repainting and the new cutters will be done, we're gonna wait for the painting, or the roof is done first, we're gonna let them mess it up to do paint. One thing we're gonna have to do, and perhaps I can break it up next month on our agenda, is for twenty twenty four, the lead copper rule work that we're doing, the service leads, we're doing, what are we doing this year? Fifty of them this year, um, we're gonna do new watering work this year, so we have to decide, are we gonna do a stretch of water main, a block or two of water main next year? And I think that the two streets in the rain in our park and Denison, you know, we've been up from Pontiac, uh, east. One's a little longer, so obviously it'll cost you more, Denison's a shorter, so it'll be less perhaps, so. We have to be aware that if we're gonna do that, we'll have to choose pretty soon, get a design engineer in pretty soon, because people are already ordering pipe for next year. And, um, we'll have to get that out there and get it, someone nail it down before the end of the year, I think, in order to, I think we may even wanna, you know. It's hard, you don't wanna bid toward it, because they can't bid toward it, right? It's work that wouldn't happen till next spring, maybe even June, July, but we should at least nail down what our next road is and get the design down on it and see where we go from there. If for some reason we go and bid now and contractors can't get pipe. And some communities I've heard are switching to allow plastic piping and mains.
Didn't we pass that here, Don?
No, just from the curb stop.
Service leads.
From the curb stop, yeah.
Are we meeting our ego minimums on the, the lead work?
Right there, yeah.
The unfunded mandate that was put about us.
Correct. According to them, it's not a mandate, it's a, I mean, a little right choice.
That's what the state argued.
Yeah, so anyways, I'll just bring something back. Perhaps what might help with that determination next month is if I get an engineer's estimate of the, or the Denison Street versus Park Street, because there would have been lengths. And then that would give us at least a parameter, sorry, are we going to have...
Five rockers.
Are we going to have two hundred thousand dollars?
Two hundred thousand dollars.
It's going to actually, so...
Don, I don't want to sue you.
So I'll, I'll try to get some information on that, it's obvious that we can talk, I'll make sure that helps you out. That's all.
Great, thank you. Terry?
Uh, I don't really have anything. Maybe next month.
Thanks, Ben.
I have something, which I normally don't, right? I, I think council, you should take a minute to commend yourselves for what you're doing, because, let me tell you, I, I attend a lot of meetings, I watch a lot of communities. You're taking on issues, you've taken on FOIA, you've taken on inspections, you're working on projects. You're, you're tackling issues on a monthly basis that a lot of communities are at a standstill, and you guys are progressing forward. You're looking at your purchasing ordinance, you're looking at your investment policies. These are big issues, and you're undertaking them systematically, you should commend yourselves.
Thank you very much, appreciate that. Um, next up, council comments, let's start with Lori.
Thank you, hope everyone had a good holiday.
Thank you.
Join the summer and excited to see all the stuff going on downtown, so beautiful climate in Oxford right now.
Absolutely.
This is definitely the time of year that like you really feel the sense of community in Oxford, so I think the D D A has also expanded upon that in, in recent times, so I appreciate that, and thank you staff for everything you do.
Well said.
Man, before you get the last word, may I say something?
Yep, not so far.
I just want to give a shout out to our beautification commission, who, Dan and D P W, they hanked out all the old, overgrown perky bushes here on the, in the ramp, on the, our side of the building. Beautification commission came in this year and replanted it all, and it looks really beautiful. I know D B W is, is watering, they were concerned about the watering, you know, and it's really doing well.
Awesome.
Good event.
Yeah, thanks for mentioning that. All right, I'll move to adjourn at eight thirty-three. All those in favor, say aye. You can get to adjourn, thank you.